Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of June 1st, 2020. Let us all rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in accordance with LV 898, a copy of the Openshooting Meeting Act, just posted in the back of the chamber, the order of business of the city council will be as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on these items should come forward. After the clerk reads them, read that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may, then may, then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. And the second and last meeting of the month, which will be next week, and then 30th or 31st, will be prior to adjournment. Anyone may come and speak on any issue not on the agenda for that day, nor plan for future adjournments. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Okay, we ask those of the general public come forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, and give your address and sign in on the signing sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use the microphone right there to the right. If, excuse me, once you have testified and council does not have any questions for you, you may leave the council chambers there on that door to your left. Our first item on the agenda today is our consent agenda, items 1 through 2K.
Anybody wishing to speak on consent items? Seeing none, let's move on.
We can now vote on our consent items. Item 1A is reappointing Jim Johnson to Historic Preservation Commission for a term to expire April 15th, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Ward, seconded by Roy. What's his name? Please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is reappointing Doug Crifles to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term to expire April 4th, 2023, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We do have our liquor items here, items 2A through 2I.
I move approval of item, what, 2A through I?
Second.
Been moved by Christensen, seconded by Amy Ward. Please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That's the end of our consent items. Next is our public hearing resolutions. I'm going to call items 4A and 4B together. Item 4A is approving the Hepburn Square redevelopment agreement between RT Hepburn LLC and the city relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 2400 Q Street, and also amending the fiscal year of 1920 CIP to authorize the appropriation of 192,000 in TIF funds for the Hepburn redevelopment project generally located at 2400 Q Street.
Director Marvin?
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin with Urban Development Department. What you have before you today is a project we've talked about. We've gone through the plan amendment to allow this project to go forward, and we're excited about it because I think it breaks a lot of new ground here, and I think it's a, it's a great project. This project has also been reviewed by the Urban Design Committee, too. The renderings have been shown, I think, two times, and they've gone through that approval process as well. It's gone through the Planning Commission. So what you have before you today, the parts that I think that are interesting about this is that this project is a 12plex building. We were asked by the developer to make certain adjustments in the parking requirements so that they could make better use of the land. The location of this project is on 24th and Q Street, and they are making some adjustments to the parking requirements, allowed them to better utilize that space. We also asked for them, and they granted the ability to provide two, what we would define as affordable housing units. These would be apartments that will rent at a cost burden number of 30% or more of a person making 60% area median income. So, that's a mouthful there, but the math here is that they will operate for the next 15 years, two units that will make it very affordable for somebody who makes 60% of area median income to be able to live in those units. But they will go a step further, too. On four additional units, they will not be restrictive in terms of income, which means that the units will also, an additional four, will be available for housing vouchers for people who apply to rent from this, from the Hepburn Square operator. The, the information, I know that there's going to be a, an amendment, a substitute amendment, and the amendment will make a change to Section 304 where it talks about the facade enhancements. The number that is listed there is $60,000, and then if you go back and look at Exhibit C in that same document, you'll see that the facade enhancements are $75,000. So the question is, which is it? The answer is the facade enhancements are $75,000, so the text changes will adjust that. And then the amount of the investment by the redevelopers, shown as $1,500,000, that number was put in there, there's correction on that number, the amount is $1.2 million. Neither of these change any of the renderings that are in the packet. They're not going to adjust what you, what's been taken through the process already, and they won't change the terms on the affordability of this project either. With me today is Ann Post. She's representing Hepburn Squares, and I think that she'd like to have an opportunity to make a couple of comments as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Seeing none?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Baylor Ebbin Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the developer, RT Hepburn LLC. We are excited to bring this project in front of you. Like was stated, this is a 12plex apartment that's going to be located at 2400 Q Street. And to just provide a few of the renderings, these were provided at the Urban Design Committee. Do I need to push a button, or are these going to? Wonderful.
It's coming.
Great. This gives you an idea of what the facade is going to look like. Yes, we are very excited to bring you this project, excited to have been able to work with the Urban Development Department to make this project possible. As Director Marvin said, we will commit, the developer has committed two units to affordable housing and to accepting vouchers in at least four units. So I think this, we're excited to bring this to the community, to bring this housing mix. I think the only other thing I would want to emphasize is that this is a market rate apartment complex. This is not all affordable housing. There are going to be market rate units mixed in, together with affordable housing, and we think that that's going to be a great benefit to the community. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you for coming up. Is there anybody else here wishing to speak in favor or against this project? Yes, we do, we have one coming in. Whoa. State your name.
The beard is different.
Yes.
Richard Holverson. Good afternoon. As many of you are aware, I sometimes come down here and regal against TIF.
TIF.
And if somebody had told me a while back, well, someday you're going to come down there and testify in favor of TIF project. Because some of them are, you know, kind of okay, like grocery on Old Street, others like building condos in the sky that 97% of Lincoln couldn't afford to live in, eh, not so much from my way of thinking. But actually testify in favor of TIF? I'd say, yeah, when pigs fly, or when Super Saver runs out of toilet paper. Or I beat the mayor in the National Guard marathon. Well, Super Saver ran out of toilet paper, and it wouldn't surprise me in these weird times to see flying swine one of these days. I'm never going to beat the mayor. But I am strongly in favor of this, because again, because of the affordable housing aspect. Lincoln needs more affordable housing, and I came down here to speak in favor and commend the developer for bringing this forward, and hopefully other developers for follow suit so we can have more affordable housing in Lake of Nebraska. And that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward to speak in favor or against this project? Would the developer like to say anything? Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you very much.
Vote. No questions for staff?
No.
Okay, so let's.
I have the substitute amendment.
We are okay to vote on the items for public hearing resolutions?
Yes, we are.
So we do have that motion to amend for item 4A. Mr. Christensen.
Add the motion and then rule amendment.
I move item 4, motion to amend number 1 to amend bill number 20R-168, and adopt a substitute agreement attached here, too. And this is just the correction, was talked about earlier by Mr. Marvin.
Second?
I'll second.
And move to second then? What we really need is a motion on the, a main motion.
That's right, we do need a motion on.
Oh.
The main. So who, who was, whose was it?
Who introduced?
Ward introduced the item 4A.
So moved.
Second.
Move. Ward seconded, by Jay Ray.
Now I move the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion to amend, and second. Any discussions on the motion to amend? Seeing none, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now call the motion on the main, amend on the main motion.
Main motion, okay. Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, we're really rusty at this.
We are. Item 4B then is amending the fiscal year 1920 CIP to authorize the appropriate 192,000 in TIF funds for the Hepburn redevelopment project generally located at 2400 Q Street, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
This is a good thing.
This is, okay.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That will end our public hearing resolutions portion of our agenda. Next is items 5, is our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item 5A is authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bond Series 2020 in the principal amount not to exceed $7,500,000.
Hi, members of the council, Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director for the city. So before you, we have two ordinances today. I also have Collin Duncan with Gilmore Bill, who is our bond counsel on this issue. So both of them, both of these ordinances for the GEO refunding and the turnback tax bonds refunding for, they're both refundings to basically help the city save money for the upcoming budget. So, as you know, COVID-19 has also had impacts on the bond market. We've seen very wild fluctuations. It's stabilized recently, but more than anything, we're asking for approval to move forward with these so that we can achieve the savings. So for the first one, the 2011, there's two bond issues that we're looking at refunding, and that's a total of 7.5 million. The 2011, that's worth 5.13 million within that package. It's got a savings of about 12% right now, that we're estimating. So that's about 605,000 in net present value savings over the length of it, or about $65,000 annually over the life of the bond. We haven't set any competitive sell dates or anything yet because we've been waiting, at least to take some budgetary action to show the management and rating agencies what we're doing from a budgetary perspective. So as we get closer to having some of those discussions, we'll be looking forward to moving forward with the rating agencies as well. Structure of debt, it's a 10-year repayment cycle. The debt's not extended beyond the current life. There's no new dollars associated with it. The other portion, the 2011 refunding, which was 1.54 million, right now I'm asking for the approval to move forward to refund that. However, we're also looking at that as potential of a budget solve, of potentially just paying that off early, paying that 1.54 million off early. So that would save about 535,000 annually. For the turnback tax bonds that we're asking to refund, there's 25.5 million outstanding on that 2013 issue. GFOA recommends a 3% threshold. We're currently a little bit below that on the last estimate. It was at 2.37. At that 2.37 net present value savings, it had approximate savings of 485,000. So it's a little below the threshold, but we still want to ask for approval to move forward because we'll continue to look at the market, and if it's at a point where we see it's beneficial to move forward, we'll go ahead and try to refund that to save, save money. So, and that, with that one, too, there's no additional dollars associated with it. It's just a straight refunding. We're leaving the repayment cycle over that 17-year cycle that it was set at originally. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll stand for them.
Does anybody have any questions? I have one quick disclarification. What we're doing is giving you approval to move forward, but you don't have to move forward at a certain time or date if the markets get out of whack again, or?
That is correct, yeah. We don't, I don't have to move forward. So, yeah, we've got to continue to watch the markets, but we also have to take some actions on, from a budgetary perspective so we can have good discussions with rating agencies. So this has been a turbulent time, and everything in the bond markets haven't been excluded from that.
Okay. Any other questions for Brandon?
No, I am very appreciative of your looking at the book and creatively trying to figure out how we grab some savings.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to come forward to speak on items 5A or 5B in authorizing the refunding of bonds? Anybody in the back? Need to speak? Seeing none, we can move on to the next item.
I just want some clarification because I didn't read item 5B yet. I'm assuming that Brandon had talked about both of them, is that correct?
No, we've gone through 5A and B.
Okay.
So 5C.
All right, so I'll move on to 5C.
Yes.
Item 5C is approving the real estate sales agreement between the city and TNNG Capital LLC for the sale of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of 27th and Old Cheney Road.
Director Marvin?
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development. What you have before you today is a purchase agreement for some land on 27th and Old Cheney. Just a little history on this land. This land was acquired, I believe, by the city in 1977, the year I graduated from high school. I was not living in Lincoln in 1977, and I think Old Cheney Road at that time, it might have been a dirt road, I'm not sure, but I know it was a two-lane road. And it was purchased, I believe, with the idea that at one point this land would be used for a fire station and a future branch library. The branch library never appeared, and a few years ago, there was a decision that this was never going to be used by the city. So it was gone through a surplusing process, and then it was surplus. At the time, Mayor Beitler, I think, worked and negotiated a sale with Broadmoor at $250,000 for the sale of that property. That was, that sale was never consummated. I think the general consensus was that, that the, the purchase price was not sufficient to warrant the sale. When the new mayor came in, we had had some inquiries from people wondering if this property would be reconsidered for sale. We put a sign up. We tried to investigate ways that would make this property sold to the public with the least amount of impact, because if it was not going to be sold to Broadmoor, it would need to be sold to somebody other than Broadmoor, and they, unless they were going to helicopter in there, they would need access to the property. I would remind the council that when it was purchased in 1977 and it was going to be built as a library, there would have been access granted to that property back at that point. Never happened, so what happened was policy grew around this property, and it was not allowed to be able to have access. Probably by September or October of last year, prior to Chief Cassidy, he came on for LTU director for a period of time, and he reviewed this. We asked him would, he looked for limited access, ways that we could do this, and he agreed to allow limited access off of 27th Street. There would be a deceleration lane and would be allowed access. So that's the direction we proceeded with sale. We advertised it for over 30 days. Weather got kind of bad and cold, so we kept her sign up there for a while. We informed previous people who had had an interest in this property and informed them of it. And we got an offer from, what you will hear from the, the purchaser's attorney. We got an offer from two doctors who wanted to put a doctor's office there. They would probably close business at 5:00, open in the morning, be a surgery center. They did not think that this was a high-impact trip count. We took that information through the planning department. Planning concurred with that, and we moved forward with this sale. There's an issue that's, why this is long-winded, what complicates this is, we went back to Broadmoor probably in December, informed them that we had another purchase at a higher price and that we were moving forward with that. And Mr. Houston, I think, had waited a long time for us to be able to get back in touch with us, and his comments was that he wasn't sure if they were, if Broadmoor was interested in moving forward on the project anyway. And then probably for the next four or five months, again, COVID hits, other things happen. There's negotiations with a purchase agreement. Tim C. is here, so he can testify to the, the length of time that it took to negotiate a purchase agreement. But then it appeared up on first reading, and we got contact, and it's in your packet, a letter from Mr. Houston representing his client, Broadmoor, and they would like to be able to match the price. So that's where we are today. I know Mr. Houston is here as well to talk about this. So we'll probably spend a fair amount of time on a property sale that we originally thought was going to be relatively simple. If you have any questions for me, I'll also be able to make myself available, and Michelle is here as well. We'll make ourselves available after you've heard from the public.
Okay. Right?
Is any TIF anticipated to be part of either project?
No, it is not in a blighted and substandard area, so that the, the development, unless they went through a process of declaring that area blighted and substandard, we don't anticipate that as being a.
Do we have any information available to us about what the property value would be after completion of either project?
I don't. I don't, and I know that you vote on this. I know you vote on this in a week. We can certainly try to find that information for you.
Any other questions? One other quick one? Yes.
Since this is so unusual, I'm, I, I was puzzled when it came before us, and I was puzzled as I was reading it. Have we considered, and I don't know what the standard policy is for the city to do, and it's such an unusual situation, is just like, go back to both parties interested, last, final offer, deliver it to the city by X amount of time? Because it seemed like both parties have a great deal of interest in this property, have expressed interest, longstanding interest, and, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we do everything in a fair way, or?
And I, I, my reaction on that is that, well, first of all, I think we did do everything in a fair way. I think Tim negotiated with this, our department negotiated with, with the doctors. We did everything, and, and the doctors have performed everything in the way in which we asked. So I think it would be unusual practice for our department to be creating bidding wars. We wanted to be able to reach out our hand to somebody who would provide a highest and best offer for this property, and we, in good faith, negotiated with them. So I think as a practice, we would like to be able to continue to do that.
Okay. One other quick question for you. If. Okay. One other quick question for you. If we're creating another access, is the city having to pay for anything for that new access?
No.
Okay.
The, the only, the only difference is there is some language in the agreement that measures to square feet and the amount of land that comes back from that will be a deduct off of the, the turn because that's dedicated land that's our property and we're not selling them, having them pay for property that later becomes the city. So the turn lane itself would be a deduct against the, the overall purchase price, as I understand it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other testimony?
Pardon me. I do have one more question.
Oh, Director Marvin.
For Director Marvin. Yes. Sorry. Just to keep the apples and apples together, since you talked about the deduct of the turn lane coming off the purchase price, because that would have been city property, if it were to sell to Broadmoor, would there be any deducts because of streets, internal?
No. I don't, and I don't know if it was an apartment project, and fair disclosure, you and I spoke about this on Friday.
Did.
If it was an apartment project, I don't know if they're asking for height waivers or other elements in regards to that.
Can I comment on that? The past offer, all access was going to be through the existing Broadmoor apartments.
Right. And so I want, I, you're right. We don't know what a future thing would be, but the past offer was more apartments entering from the original.
Yes.
Complex.
Okay.
Are those public streets or private streets?
I don't think they're blue streets, but I'm not sure. They could be. They may be, they may be private streets.
Okay.
Probably it's through circulation within the apartment complex.
I'm trying to keep my apples, my, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Marvin? Okay. Like to come on up?
Hello. Jessica Greenwald, attorney for TNNG Capital, 121 South 13th Street here in Lincoln. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you all about this project. I obviously represent the doctors who have presented an offer to the city to purchase that parcel on 27th and Old Chaney. And Councilmember Washington, just to touch a little bit on, more on your question regarding that deduction for that turn lane, my understanding in our negotiations with Tim C. is that the city believes that they actually have already accounted for that deduction. We just wanted to make sure in our negotiations that if by chance, when we get a survey of the property, if the square footage actually reveals that we are buying less than what we have offered to pay per square foot, that we would just adjust based on that. We're not expecting much in the way of an adjustment, but just tried to contemplate that, that idea there with, with that deduction.
Thank you.
My clients intend to utilize this parcel as a surgical center and medical office and obviously have run this by several different city departments. And the city seems very interested in our use of the property. We intend and anticipate that our traffic volumes will be very low. Approximately eight to 10 employees in the surgical center. They will have an average of 10 to 20 patients a day. Will be open from the hours of 8:00 to 5:00 and having traffic circulate throughout the day. So no, typically no peak travel times that we'd be expecting an increase in traffic in that area. We would, you know, request and need obviously an access point for, for this property as it would be a separate parcel. And we would anticipate that that would be on 27th Street as proposed by the city. The city has also proposed the O3 zone change, which we are agreeable to. And we feel that it provides a best use of that particular property and allows for, you know, many different uses in the event that, you know, 20, 30 years down the road, it needs to change to something different. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have for my clients.
Hey, thank you for coming down. I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about what kind of procedures that would be performed at this office? Or I'm just, when you say surgical center, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of service this would be providing.
Right now, mostly neurosurgery. The two doctors that have proposed to purchase this are neurosurgeons. So they would be servicing both patients in Lincoln and the surrounding areas. We believe that this particular, particular location is excellent in order to service those different patients because they actually service a lot of folks who don't have easy access to healthcare in this respect. And so they, you know, it'd be an easy in and out for folks to get in and out of Lincoln who aren't, you know, really familiar with a, a bigger city.
Did you look at any area in northeast Lincoln to come into or North Lincoln? And the reason I ask that is, I mean, the very real serious issue of the lack of facilities in North Lincoln. And, you know, if we want to talk about having access to people out of state, I mean, the interstate's right, coming in through North Lincoln and access to service the people who might not have health insurance, North Lincoln's a great place to do that.
Absolutely. Fair comment. I don't know that for sure. I know that they have been looking for quite some time for a piece of land to build this center on. And so when this became available, they really felt strongly about this particular piece. So.
Any other questions?
Given that this is, you're talking about access, I may just ask the question. This is going to be, I think, a right turn in, right turn out.
Correct.
So there's no lefts.
Right only.
Across traffic. Okay. Yeah. It's quite an intersection there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Indeed.
Any other questions for Ms. Greenwald? Very none. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Others that wish to testify on this item?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the council. Good to see you all. It's been a while since I've been down here and seen you in person. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln, on behalf of Broadmoor Development, which is the affiliate of South Lincoln Apartments, LTD, which owns the adjacent apartment, apartment project. First of all, I do want to say that my client has nothing against a medical office building, has nothing against TNNG Capital and their proposed use of the property. We're here today to provide to you an alternative to the proposed use. I don't think there's anything inherently bad or otherwise offensive about the proposed use being considered here. But the, there is an alternative to, an ex, an exception to the city's access management policy. Just a little bit of background, background about Broadmoor. Broadmoor has multiple investments in the city of Lincoln. They, they have owned this surrounding property since the late 80s. In approximately 1988, they built 240 units. And then in 2, in 2002, another 12 units were added. Obviously, it's a traction, Broadmoor's attraction to the site is that it would have internal access to the surplus property without any need for any curb cut onto the adjacent arterial streets. In the last 10 years, Broadmoor's made multiple attempts to try to buy this property. And I think it was, certainly was involved because I made the, made the request that the, that the property be declared surplus back in 2014. And I think Director Marvin is correct. At that time, the, the city declined to sell the property for whatever reason. My memory is identical is that there was a lot of, I guess, discussion that the property is worth more than the offer made by Broadmoor at the time. This past December, in December 2019, Broadmoor did offer $400,000 as a purchase for this property. It was conditioned upon the fact that, the way we read the city requirements, that there would be no access to 27th or Old Chaney Road. I think that condition at some point has been removed or that's really the issue in front of you. As I indicated in my letter to you, Broadmoor is willing to increase its offer, to, to match the offer presented by TNNG Capital. Broadmoor would present three conditions for closing, two of which would have to happen if you sold it to anybody. Number one, it's currently has a P public zone. It'd have to be changed to some other zoning classification. The surrounding properties included in the R3 zone, and I believe that would be sufficient for this property if it were to be developed by Broadmoor. Second issue that would have to be satisfied is that a subdivision is going to be required. Obviously, the city needs to retain Fire Station Number Four, and so we need to separate that off from, from ownership perspective. And the third condition of closing would be an amendment to the existing special permit. The surrounding neighborhood, Tierra, is controlled by the Old Chaney Community Unit Plan, which has excess capacity for dwelling units. And we could add 42 units, which is the desire by Broadmoor, to that existing community unit plan, amend that special permit, and it would be approved according to the existing zoning regulations. So the real issue for you is whether or not the city should comply with the access management policies. A part of the development of this property, the access management policy would prohibit any curb cuts within 1,320 feet of an intersection of two arterial streets like this. And that's, that's pretty onerous. The, I guess the last thing I would, I would say is that Broadmoor's intention would be to build 42 apartments based upon similar values that would constitute a, an investment of approximately 5.2 million. And you can do the math on the resulting taxes from that amount. So here, I, I think the issue is really just whether or not you want to have an alternative to having access onto 27th Street. And that's the offer. The idea of having a final and last offer, that's attractive to me and my client. I think that makes sense. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Yes, Sandra?
All right. If, can you tell me what, if your client would be looking to ask for waivers for height or setbacks or something?
None would be required. The R3 zone has a 35 height limitation. It's accommodating all the existing apartments and Broadmoor intend to match them in design. So there would be no waiver requirement of any zoning regulation.
Okay. Yes.
I just want to, I, I'm a little confused. So when you first bought this land, it was essentially because there was going to be no allow, no access in, into that property. But if it goes to this medical facility, then there would have to be a deviation from the access plan.
Yes.
Okay. And if you were to take this land essentially, then there, we wouldn't have to deviate from the access plan?
That is correct. And with, without a doubt, a, an office use has a higher value on, from a land perspective, land development perspective than a multifamily use. And if this is going to be a bidding war, I can tell you which user's going to bid more. But I, I at least wanted to present the alternative to the city, that you had another option in front of you that, that would not require you to deviate from your own access management policy on the development of city-owned ground.
Any other questions? Yes, Jane?
Mr. Houston, could you review the timeline again? You said in December of 2019, Broadmoor made an offer of the 400,000.
Correct.
And then when did you hear that the offer was declined?
When I read the agenda a couple of weeks ago. And I, I'm not here to bemoan the, the process at all. That's not my objective. I pay attention to what's on your agenda. And so I, it, there is no problem on that. That's why I had the opportunity to write you a letter. So that's not my concern. My concern is presenting you an alternative to the development option in front of you.
And then the second question, when did you present this alternative offer?
Well, I mean, as I mentioned, Broadmoor has been trying to buy the property for 10 years. We had an agreement that did not enter, get introduced to the city council in 2014. And then I utilized that same format in December of 2019 to submit an additional offer. But it was premised upon the fact that the city requirement of no curb cut was going to be imposed at that time. That's, that was why the, the value was substantially less, roughly half of the offer that you received.
Did you submit this offer just to us via your letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, once I saw it on the agenda, I guess it was before Memorial Days when I saw it.
How many units did you say that you'd be able to build?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Okay.
There, there's like 45. I, I worked this out with the planning department back in 2014, so I think it's still true. But the community unit plan that governs Tierra has excess dwelling units unused that really governs the Broadmoor development of 45. And based on building design, I think 42 is what Broadmoor would, would desire.
Thank you. Any other questions? There was a question before about were these private roadways behind?
It's all internal private drives. It's not public access at all. It's not even a private street. It's private drive.
Okay.
The, the internal roads to the apartment project, like most apartment projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it, I don't, I don't recall if this is the appropriate time or not for staff?
For, for staff?
It'd be Michelle.
For you, Dan.
No, Michelle.
Oh, Michelle.
I think Dan's looking for other public ones.
All right.
He's trying to be conservative.
Get Dan back up here.
I'll, I'll make it up.
Michelle Vakamire, Urban Development Department.
Michelle, I know you deal with property day in, day out, appraisals in, appraisals out, you know, right away acquisition here and there and everywhere. So has, has this situation ever presented itself before you when we have two interested parties on a piece of property?
Actually, years and years and years ago, we actually had three offers on a piece of property. And I couldn't tell you where it was at anymore. And we got them all within about a week. And at that time, we had a little bit different surplus property processes, but we just took all three to council and had all three people come up to council and talk about what they were going to do with it and let council decide which way to go.
Any other questions? Yes, James?
Can I ask a question out of the, out of, I'm sorry, I clicked on your name.
Greenwald.
On Ms. Greenwald.
Pardon me.
Yes.
I know that, I know that you said that the, the physicians that you work with have been looking at property for quite some time and they've, this is how they finally settled on this location. I'm just trying to get a better sense, I guess, in general on, were there any locations in North Lincoln that you looked at? Or do you have any records on that or?
I don't. And I don't know. I'm sorry. I, I, I don't know exactly the properties that they've looked at before. You know, they engaged us to, to assist them with some negotiations in, in this particular property. I just know from speaking with them that they've been looking for, for some time now.
I would be really interested in any thoughts that, you know, even later, any thoughts that they would have on why they went with this location. Because a lot of people in northeast Lincoln and North Lincoln are asking for more medical facilities. And so even kind of hear about their process, I would really appreciate to figure out what can happen to draw more of that type of service to my constituents.
Sure. I do know in speaking to them that they do service a lot of patients in, south of Lincoln, south and west of Lincoln. And so to them, it seemed like a good place for this particular surgical center, easy in and out of Lincoln, you know, via 77 or whatnot that would allow their patients to be in and out of Lincoln quickly without having to deal with a ton of the traffic that they may otherwise have to encounter. So I know, you know, in speaking to them, that's really why they chose that particular parcel.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
You have one for Ms. Greenwald?
Do you have an estimation of the future development valuation?
You know, I don't right now. I, I could certainly get those numbers to you. They do propose, and, and did propose in their letter, initial offer to the city, that they would be constructing a 3,000-square-foot medical office and then a 10,000-square-foot surgical office. So if that helps in, in your assessment.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully it does. But I'm, I'm happy to provide any additional that I need to, to all council members. Any other questions?
I have one real quick for you.
Yes, sir.
The lot on here is actually a legal lot. Have we subdivided out what we're gonna?
No.
Okay.
No, it would need to be replatted.
It needs to be replatted and subdivided.
Correct. Yes. And that would be a condition of closing, I think, also proposed by Mr. Houston. So.
You have to subdivide out the firehouse.
Correct.
Firehouse has to be on its own lot.
Yes.
2.27 acres. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think roughly that's, yeah, the idea. And our offer was based on several comps in the area. And I'm happy to get those to you if you, if you'd like. But that's where my clients had derived their initial offer. So.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Greenwald.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody else in the audience would like to come forward to speak in favor or opposed to this? Seeing none, this will come back to us next week. Let's move on.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is item 5D, suspending portions of Chapter 5.04 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, alcoholic liquor during the current emergency to shorten the application period and to allow the city clerk to administratively approve certain outdoor special designated licenses.
Okay. We will have our city attorney come up then.
I kind of feel like we're at a, one of those drive-up places where you order fast food. It's like.
The clown out front, you can't understand.
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. As we discussed briefly during the directors, this is part of the city's initiative to help, try to help out bars and restaurants, which have been really challenged during this pandemic situation. this pandemic situation. This is an ordinance that's intended to temporarily suspend provisions of Title V as it applies to special designated licenses. It's twofold. One would be to temporarily designate the city clerk as your agent in approving SDLs. You've already done that for SDLs that are requested on private property. This would extend that authority to SDLs that are requested on public property, whether that be city sidewalk or a city street or what have you. And the second part of it, in an attempt to allow bars and restaurants to ask for and get SDLs on a, on a more timely basis because of the pandemic, would, would change the requirement currently that they must apply no less than 21 days prior to the date requested. This would allow the city to, to respond to a request for an SDL more quickly. For example, you could request one now for the middle of June if this was to pass. Because 21 days, if you're in the regular course of business, say you're planning a beer fest for October, you can plan ahead 21 days. If you're responding to a pandemic and trying to have more seating for your customers during this timeframe when we've got that limitation on how many customers you can have at any one time, this would allow you that, exercise that option more quickly. So that's essentially what the, the two provisions of this ordinance would do.
Okay, do we have any questions for?
Oh, yes.
Patrick?
Yes. So I have a couple of questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Attorney. All right, so when someone applies for an SDL, they can get an SDL on private property? Unlike, so if they want to have a beer garden on their own private property, they still need to ask the city for that, correct?
Yes, they do. Those are city and the state.
Okay, city and state. And then if they want, of course, have it on public property, they have to make an application as well. So during the directors meeting, you said something that I would just want to clarify. You had said that already the city clerk has the authority to grant an SDL for the restaurant owner on their own property.
Right, and, and let me clarify, that is something that the city council has previously designated the city clerk to act. So it really isn't the city clerk's authority, they're just acting as an agent for the city council because you've already given them that, that authority going forward. And it was really an attempt to be more efficient since you had a number of businesses that were coming in on a regular basis, who you had seen before, that you had approved. And I think the example I gave was Cappy's because I think they were the, the business that came in most regularly.
I can comment on that too, because I was part of the council when we did that. And it was literally during the summer months, it was probably six of those every week. It was a lot. And so, and it was the same people every time.
Okay, so that I'm, so now I'm curious, because we've got this pandemic and we're going back now into the summertime, how many are we getting right now of that kind? And do you expect there to be a lot of requests of people wanting an SDL on their own property?
Sony might be better positioned to answer that, but I would guess that we haven't seen very many just because of going through this situation where the folks with liquor licenses and eating establishments have been so limited.
Right.
In really trying to figure out what's going to happen even the next week, as far as what the, the governor is going to order or what the, our local health department are going to do has been really problematic and challenging. So Sony might be able to address whether she's seen a recent increase, given what we've done as far as loosening up.
Currently, we haven't had very many applications because of, of the pandemic, but with the possibility of relaxing some of these conditions, I have already received numerous phone calls and emails inquiring about the process and if they can already submit applications at this point. So there is a large interest for a variety of different establishments, not only restaurants, but also bar owners as well. So it's just a matter of seeing the possibilities of who can actually be able to, to do that. And it's a combination of our local authority and approval along with the state. So it's something that is being worked on and discussed at the moment, but the interest is there and a lot of people are just waiting to submit applications right now.
All right, thank you. I certainly can understand a need to get out ahead of this and help businesses do what they can to get back to business more like usual. So when you, I asked the question during the directors, I'll ask it again. So when this, when we put the, the goal of shortening the timeframe, that the city looks at an application, I realize there's what the state has to do and they, they will or they, they won't. But if we're looking to shorten the amount of city time, do you have a goal in mind from 21 days to five days?
And currently, our code says 21 days and that's to give the city clerk's office the ability to process because we've had times when they've come in fast and furious. But the goal at this point, I think from the city's perspective, is to help out as many businesses as quickly as possible. So there is no idea of, well, we've got to have at least five days. But there is a recognition, for example, if that authority stays with the council, then they would have to expect a delay because they have to get it on the council agenda and wait for the, for the meeting and for you to vote and then for the, for the mayor to sign. So that builds in what probably 10 to 12-day delay at minimum. So that would be kind of the minimum we're looking at if it stays within the council's purview.
Okay.
And then you've got the additional, as we talked about, state process for whatever, however quickly they're able to streamline as well.
If we were to change some rules at the council level and keep the decision at the council, do you believe that we could do so within legal, within the law that we have right now to shorten it to seven days?
You can certainly, you have the authority to, to suspend your rules. And so it's, it's a matter of when they get the application in, when it falls in the cycle as far as getting it on the agenda.
That's right, okay.
Can I just comment on that? If we were to, if we were to agree to suspend our rules and vote on first reading, it would on every application reduce the time by seven days.
At least, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
I think, just one other comment. With the sidewalk, or with this SDL, I think it has the conjunction of the outdoor dining as well. So we also kind of have to consider when that portion of it is also approved from our outdoor dining committee on the expansion, whether if it's on the right-of-way or street in conjunction with the liquor portion of it as well. So that, I don't know what the timeframe turnaround would be, but we're hoping to make it quickly as well.
Yes, and, and our city clerk brought up the other part of this whole challenge that we talked about during directors, which is the, the mayor has issued an order suspending or allowing the amendment of certain city requirements to allow some flexibility for a number of these businesses in order to expand their outdoor space during this pandemic so they can take advantage of public or private space in a way that allows them to safely seat and serve more customers.
Any?
Yes, I, actually listening to that and I pretty much forgot what my question was. Public hearing, that's what my question was. If we suspend the rules, better or worse? If we suspend the rules, normally we get first reading and no one shows up. If we suspend that, how difficult will it be to invite the applicant to come and testify at first reading?
I think that's just a matter of, of the clerk's office notifying them that will be a, a public meeting and it's the process of the city council. If you adopt that process, to have the hearing and vote on, on first reading. And so the clerk's office now informs all the applicants, you know, on second reading, please show up, you know, we're going to have that hearing and it's just a matter of timing.
But we'll be suspending the rules on a case-by-case basis, right? Or do we make a declaration that we're always going to suspend the rules?
I think you would still, you would have to vote to suspend your own rules every week that you did so. But if you've established the practice for this interim period of doing that, then the clerk's office would expect you to follow that practice and notify.
Tell the applicant to show up on first reading.
So we would actually compress, one, two, three, we would compress it down, or we'd two, we'd compress two weeks to one week?
Right.
Okay.
One week plus having to get it on the agenda.
Yeah, getting on the agenda, but then the first reading would be the hearing and the vote.
Exactly.
Just a quick question for our city attorney. So the process itself, that would, would they still be, the application still be vetted by Bryan Hafer, Hofer, LPD? Does that, so we still get the process?
Yes.
So that would be the same?
Would be the same, the application. Now, we've modified the application somewhat. The clerk's office has worked, I know with Tanya Peters from my office and, and the police department to try to streamline it somewhat with the idea of not just for the SDLs, but also with someone looking to, even if they don't have a liquor license, to be able to expand maybe into some public space for the restaurant. And so we've tried to come up with a streamlined application form for businesses to use.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the audience would like to come forward, speak on this?
Yes, hello, I'm, I'm Doug Ditman and I have Hub Cafe at 250 North 21st Street on Union Plaza.
What's the social distance?
Carla Nacala, events coordinator for Hub Cafe.
First of all, I want to say thank you for your leadership during these difficult times and very grateful to City Lincoln. So Hub Cafe, it's an interesting public-private partnership. It's on Union Plaza and it's a farm table restaurant and it serves the trails community. And we were very fortunate that we were able to get PPP payments, which will end on June 11th. And according to those loans, you spend all the money that you receive. And so the question that's facing a lot of restaurants right now is how do we make our first payroll? Because we were fortunate to get the loans, but they were spent. So I think we're, we're facing a very difficult time. June is kind of a make or break month for the restaurant business. And now we're, we're open, we're, so we're, we're trying to run a full staff where you're allowed half occupancy. That, the numbers really don't work. So I just, I'm here in support of this and wanted to lend my voice in support of it, that it would give us an opportunity where we could have half occupancy in our restaurant and half occupancy perhaps outside. People are hesitant to come into the restaurants. And if the door isn't swinging open and shut, you're going to have real problems and that's what we're facing right now. One of the bottom lines, for instance, in our cafe, we serve three local beers on tap. And so let's face it, alcohol sales are an important part of, of making it. And we're now, we've opened in the evenings four to seven on Union Plaza where we have a grill and focusing on the trails community, people can come up for a reasonable price and get something to eat and something to drink. So I simply just wanted to say, thanks for considering this as a local businessman that owns a restaurant. June is the difficult month and so I appreciate some, at least some creative thinking on this. Carla has some things to say about the process that we've gone through trying to apply for this.
Thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I wasn't, I was peripherally involved with the Hub in Soul applications last year, which we felt really good about the event in the end. The process of applying and attaining those SDLs was pretty lengthy, pretty onerous, several months really in the planning and process. But in spirit of the mayor's hope to increase outdoor dining and in spirit of the city of Lincoln, helping local businesses, in particular restaurants like Doug said, that have been particularly impacted by the COVID pandemic and the aftermath. And in spirit of the healthy ways to reopen communities and outdoor dining being one of the relatively lower risk activities that you can do, in spirit of the community building aspect of, of Union Plaza and the use, the intended use of, of Union Plaza. And also in light of the Hub Cafes recently, of the Jane Snyder, as Doug mentioned, and hubs desire to host community-minded events and utilize that unique space in the private partnership and space, I just wanted to briefly support this proposed suspension of portions of chapter five. That's it.
Any questions for Doug or Carla? Yes, Tammy?
Not a question, but just a comment to say thank you both for coming down and cannot imagine the struggles and the reality of trying to reopen slowly at this hard time. You may have mentioned this, but are you planning on having Hub in Soul again or, or how does that look for you this summer and fall? It was amazing, by the way, last year, an amazing event.
Great.
It was great, wasn't it?
The prior events coordinator, Anastasia, just recently left and she's basically gotten us through the application process. So that has been submitted as of, I believe, about two weeks ago. She shared all the documents and, and I think at this point, it's kind of a wait and see.
With all the conditions that are going on, does it remind me when it starts again, hopefully?
End of August, it would be six weeks on Thursdays.
So we've got some time to hope things continue to improve. Very good. Well, thank you both so very much.
So I, I have a question. It has to do with what we were talking about just a moment ago with the intersection between the SDLs and the sidewalk eating. So I'm familiar with your restaurant, but I like your restaurant a lot, thank you very much. But I am curious if you're, if you would be applying to, to come out to the public sidewalk to the west and north of you, so Q and 21st?
Well, one unique thing about the cafe there is there are three condos in that building. And part of the original, the way it was laid out is there is a, is private land that runs 80 feet to the south and is 30 feet wide. So you know where the Jane Snyder Trail Center is. And so that land goes with the three condos. So we will be applying, Lynn Johnson from Parks and Rec recommended where we could potentially put a fence and we're going to apply to have a sidewalk cafe there. It would be nice to have, be able to, people could enjoy the amphitheater and, and this sort of thing as well. But, so that's essentially the area that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else like to come forward?
Chair, members of the council, thank you for doing this or at least thinking of this. My name is Brian Kitten, I'm owner and operator of Brewski's Food and Spirits here in Lincoln and Omaha. I am too here in favor of this, in this, but I'm just also here to, to let you know that this is not an end-all, fix-all. I have seats in my restaurant right now that aren't being filled. I have seats outside in my restaurant, on my patios, that aren't being filled. This is not going to bring the people back out. We have to figure out a way to do that. And in many places, it's not really easy to section off a piece of your parking lot, piece of a sidewalk. I have location that's, location says it's just not doable. Or if I can do it out in the parking lot, it's just not comfortable. Who wants to sit out in the middle of a parking lot in June or July when it's 95 degrees outside? It's just not that comfortable. What we can do, what I would love to see do is let us have our bars back, let us have our restaurants back. Let us put our seating at 100% again. I had a party come in on Saturday to one of my locations, there were 17 of them. The way it was configured when they came in, it just so happened that there was not any tables, that they could, they could get four tables, because they needed four tables, around, even similar, they were sitting all over the, the restaurant. It's not comfortable for them. It's not easy for them. They don't want to come back. I just ask that you, give us our, our restaurants back, let the customers decide whether or not they want to come in. If they want to sit there, fine. If they don't, let them go somewhere else, let them go home, let them stay home. I understand. But this is just not a, I mean, they're all temporary fixes and, you know, for the hub, I mean, I'm sure it's, it worked perfect for them. They have great outdoor space that they can, that they can access. There's not a lot of places that are the hub. I mean, let's face it, there's just not. I do appreciate everything that the city has done, the the off-sale, the to-go, the to-go beverages, they've all helped. They've all helped a little bit, but it's, it's, you know, it's not enough. We need our, we need our businesses back. We need them back now, or you're gonna see a lot of businesses that aren't gonna be there anymore. They're gonna go under. And it's just the cold, hard truth. We need them back, and we need them back soon, so. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Benny and I came to your place not long ago.
I appreciate it.
And uh, yeah, you need some more people coming in there.
We need a lot more people coming in, so.
We'll be back.
I just had, and I know, I had a comment of a guy that came in, it was Friday night, and he, first time I'd seen him in about three or four months, and he goes, it's my first time in. And I go, oh, really great, thanks, you know, we were talking and chatting, and he goes, you know, it's not comfortable, Ryan. He goes, I'll come back because I know you, but this is not comfortable. You know, it's, you got people coming up to your table with masks and gloves on. You know, it's not hospitable, it's not a hospi-, we're a hospitality industry, you know? We like you to come in and feel like you're in our living room. That's not how any living room that I go to feels like, so. And that's just what the public says, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um Brian, do you notice any difference in your Lincoln locations, store-to-store, restaurant-to-restaurant, um or in in your Omaha location, or is it just this way throughout?
Omaha seems to be recovering a little bit faster.
And why do you think that is?
I.
Maybe that's for another conversation.
Yeah, it should probably be another conversation.
Off the mic.
Pardon?
Off the mic.
Off the mic, absolutely. I'd be happy to take any of those questions. And I'm happy to, I mean, I'd I'd be happy to share numbers, you know, with you guys individually, I just don't want to be on the public record to it.
I understand.
And it's.
I just wondered in Lincoln if you could talk about your Haymarket location versus others.
We've closed that location. Haymarket location is closed right now. We're doing, we're undergoing some remodeling right now. We closed that location because downtown, just everybody went to working at home and, you know, it just, the business wasn't there, so we decided to close it and do some remodeling. Hopefully in the next two to three weeks, you'll start to see it open partially, so opening the outdoor.
Good.
And hopefully we can get some, you know, but, you know, it's a twenty-tables, you know, patio that, you know, social distancing, we're gonna be at ten, and, you know, doesn't pay the bills down there.
I understand, yeah. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Anybody else wanting to come forward on this suspending?
Mr. Chair, so we're doing two things to this, right? We're talking about who has the authority to sign off on the SDL and expanding the space into the parking lot.
And there's, there's gonna be an amendment.
Okay.
Next week.
Got it. Thank you.
Does that help you?
It did, it helped a lot, yes. Would've been better if I'd leaned to the mic when I started, but.
Any other questions or comments on this issue? Okay, that would end the public hearing. Let's go forward to ordinances and third readings, Sony.
Item six A, is the street name changed two zero 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 two, renaming South Seventy-Eighth Street to Beane Drive and Grand View Estates generally located at South Seventy-Eighth Street and Gerald Avenue, as introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Christensen and seconded by Jane Rabel. Any thoughts, questions on this name change of the street? I have one quick one. I just like the idea of having Seventy-Eighth Street, but I see why they want to change this and went through it because it's been replatted, just like the names. It's kind of why I fell in love with Salt Lake City for a little bit. It's easy to know where you're going.
Yeah, exactly.
You're southeast or west.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, and if it wasn't for the fact that they're going to try to align streets that already exist with this street, I would have been arguing to keep the number.
Mm-hmm.
I'll, 'cause I'll concede.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Christensen. I just remember doing a rea-, and I'm gun-shelled name-changing names. We did one once, they didn't work as well as we'd hoped. We had, well, we were well-intentioned, but it went a little sideways on us. I appreciate the extra work put into this one.
And the idea that this is not affecting anybody today, there is no address on this street. Okay, seeing nothing, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That ends our ordinance's third reading. Our resolutions' first readings are items seven A through seven E. Ordinance's first readings are, and related resolutions are items eight A through eight I, or eight L, excuse me, and then we have our pending list, items nine A through nine E.
I move adjournment.
Second.
And moved in second, that we adjourn, please call the roll.
Washington? Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Be safe, everyone.
We are out of here.